Father God, thank you so much today for your love, for your blessings for this community. We thank you for the weather. I pray, Lord, that you would be with us tonight as we go over the budget and take care of the city's business. May we be strengthened by your love, by our commitment to our constituents. Be with us tonight, in Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Thank you, Jack. And now the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody that's here tonight, early. First item here is the minutes from the fourth.
I read over the minutes and I thought they was okay, so I moved to you.
Approve, all right. Motion to approve by Jerry, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Is there any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Good evening, Diane.
Hi.
For the record, everybody is present except for Mike Clandares.
Got it, thank you.
Again, welcome everybody that is here this evening. That'll take us to reports, oral and written, the July fund report. Lynn?
Um, nothing exciting about it other than I got a little bit from June since our district had a month to spend that money.
Any questions on that? No action is needed, so we'll move on. That'll take us to unfinished business. Ordinance 2025-0801. I'll ask Denny to come up and remind us where we are on this. I believe it is second reading and specifically what we're looking at. Thanks, Denny.
Yes, absolutely. This is the second reading to create a Department of Public Works for the City of Warsaw. Went through it at the last meeting. Just, we're getting to the point where we need to kind of create that infrastructure and that position to help us get everybody on the same sheet together and get the work done.
Denny, this organizational change, and maybe Scott can help out, this has to come to council because of state code. Am I correct?
Correct, yes.
To make that type of change.
In order, in order to have an administrator, we have to create the department and code. And that's Indiana Code 36-4-9-4.
Okay, thank you. And this would be second reading on this ordinance.
There was, there was a lot of questions after the last meeting and people asking me some questions about it. And I'll make clear, this is not a position that we are creating for Dustin Dillon. This is a position that we are creating for the City of Warsaw. We just happen to think we have the best all-star at the plate already, so we're going to go ahead and take advantage of that.
Yeah, very good questions by this board, very good questions by local media as well, and good reporting also. Just what and why we're wanting to attempt this. Questions or comments from the board before I entertain a motion?
Is this, is this in the public hearing? Or was, did you have it last time?
No.
We, it was at the previous hearing where it was advertised as the ordinance before it was presented.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment that this is a result, I believe, of the growth of Warsaw. And, you know, as in, or any organization, as growth occurs, you have to be willing and able to modify the structure so that things are run efficiently. Sometimes, yeah. Sometimes it's just, it's too much for one person to try to keep track of everything. This is an old biblical principle. And I, I, I think it's a good step, whether, whether it's for Dustin or anybody. I think that the position itself is, is a good step for us to take. I wasn't at the previous meeting, so I just, I wanted to put that in there.
Thanks, Jack.
Appreciate that.
I, I don't usually weigh in, but, you know, when Mayor Tomer was here, he worked an extreme amount of hours. And now Mayor Gross is here. He's truly a full-time mayor. He's here first thing in the morning and he stays late at night. And he does a lot of things, but some of the work that he's forced to do is the stuff that the person in charge of the Board of Works could be doing and probably be doing better and more efficient from the discussions I've been part of. Because, not for any lack of what Jeff knows, there's just a lot of technical stuff that the right person knows about streets and some engineering stuff and knows bidding and knows.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's a tough position to fill. And we need that position so that it just doesn't take all of the mayor's time, because it does take a lot of the mayor's time currently. And we've got great people, you know, Jeremy does a lot, Justin does a lot, Dustin does a lot, Aaron does a lot. You know, we have a lot of people that are doing a lot of stuff. Brian does a lot, but from what I see, I think this is a long time coming. It's, it could have been here when I started. It, it's something certainly other places have. And I think it's going to be nothing but good for our community to have more central ideas that come through someone who knows a lot about it before it gets to the mayor's desk.
I think I mentioned last time that it's, different ones of us have talked over the last several years that we really felt there needed to be that extra position to help take some of the burden off of the mayor and, and help with some of the more intricate details.
And also, I like the idea of having one place for people to go to get questions answered and to know what timelines are and things like that. Because I've had constituents ask numerous heads of different departments and get different answers just because everybody's not coordinated in when something's happening or how it's happening or what the timetable's going to be or all those kinds of things. And we also certainly don't want to do work and then do it over again. We've been doing a much better job since these departments have started meeting together of not laying down a new street and then tearing it up because wastewater had to do something that somebody else didn't know about or, you know, so we've been doing a much better job of all of that so that things are better for all of our residents. And so I think this is just the next step into making the city more accessible and transparent to the people that use our services as well.
Yeah, better communication, better efficiency, probably a long-term cost savings to lay up, to steal a Mayor Gross term at the layup. With that, I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2025-0801 on second reading.
I'd second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? We'll, on the record, again, we'll thank the council. We'll thank Denny for your patience and support through this very, actually very lengthy process, which I again believe, starting with me, is going to help every resident and stakeholder in the city. So thank you for that. There's a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor passing ordinance 2025-0801 on second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much for that. Thanks, Denny. The next item is unfinished business. This is the second reading of the sign ordinance, ordinance number 2025-0802. I don't see Justin here, but we did take a look at this. And again, I think it's just making the guidelines understandable and hopefully easier to follow. Any questions from any member of the council on this ordinance being proposed again on second reading? Justin's memo is in there. And again, he presented and we worked through this and appreciate, if I remember right, Diane, you and several from the Plan Commission, was it Jergen?
Jergen.
Yeah, really appreciate all your work here to make the language easier to follow.
I would move to approve ordinance number 2025-08-02 on second reading.
Motion to approve this ordinance on second reading. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Cindy and a second by Diane. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. That will take us to new business. And if it's okay with you, I would ask for, as presiding officer, a point of order for budget presentations, which can at times be somewhat lengthy. I would like us to go to number two without any objections. Item number two, which is Resolution 2025-0802. Any objections on my point of order? Okay, hearing none. We will go to item number two. Dustin?
Hi, good evening, everybody. So attached, you have a transfer resolution for your approval. This is for the 2025 Railroad reimbursement grant. I applied for this grant, you know, back last fall actually to update all our pavement markings with new thermoplastic in every one of our railroad crossings. So this is a completely reimbursable grant through NDOT, so the cost in doing so, we've already paid $39,000. Goes into a grant fund. Lynn can correct me if I stumble there. But it goes into a grant fund and then in order to, to put the, those funds back into appropriation, we can use, we can do a transfer resolution to be able to spend that money. But again, if you've been by any of the railroad crossings here just lately, you'll see that they're all updated with, with new pavement markings, so.
I did notice that right out here
Yes.
On Buffalo Street as I was coming north the other day. And it's like, whoa, I can actually see that.
Yeah, they bow, which hopefully you're not the only one seeing them. To make sure everybody in the community is where the, there's a railroad track, a railroad crossing there. So that's the whole, the whole idea behind it. But again, thankful for grant opportunities and able to, to do that at a reimbursable expense.
Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I move we accept Resolution 2025-0802 as written.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Dustin.
Sure, again, you the second on that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I thought it was him, but I just wanted to make sure.
That will take us to agenda item number three. This is from HR, ordinance 2025-0803. Denny, explain to us where we are and why we're looking at this ordinance.
So now that we have a Department of Public Works, we would like to name a director to the Department of Public Works. In order to do that, we need to add that to the general salary ordinance for 2025. So what this is, just adding the Director of Public Works on your salary ordinance is it'll still be under the Street Department for now. And then I also included the job description there that you guys can look over if you
So this also has to be done by ordinance, this position, along with wage. And this ordinance will require two readings, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Thanks again, Denny, for all of your work here. Again, the process that we've been working through here publicly. Are there any questions about this ordinance and/or for Denny that job description, Dustin obviously is here. Any questions for Denny or myself? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion to approve on first reading. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Passes unanimous vote. You do have the option, only if you want due to a unanimous vote, you can suspend the rules. We'll need a motion for that and entertain this on second reading.
I would just like to comment that before we do that is that Mike was part of the Wage Committee that helped develop this job description and also the wage. So the fact that he's not here would not be leaving him out. In other words, he helped and agreed with what's before us tonight. So I just wanted to insert that. Because I know sometimes we don't like to take a second vote if everybody's not here or we feel like somebody might have a voice that might not be heard, so.
You are on it and all the excitement. I apologize for not bringing that up. I'm glad you guys are here, specifically Diane in this case. And I will agree, and Jack can attest.
And Jergen.
I'm sorry.
And Jergen.
Yes, and, okay, and Jergen on the Wage Committee. Jack is aware also that Mike and him were early on in these discussions, looking and then walking my direction, our direction, and then started to formalize it on the Wage Committee. And so very good point by Diane, but that is true. And again, I'm sorry, I didn't remember to bring that up. Great point. So I firmly believe that he would be, he would be in favor of that.
And so with that, I, I would make the motion that we suspend the rules so that we can vote on this ordinance a second time.
There's a motion to suspend the rules and entertain this ordinance on second reading. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion on that motion?
I'd just like to say, having been on the Wage Committee, Mike was a strong supporter of it. I don't think he'd have any problems of us voting for it in his absence. So I don't have a problem with that.
Of suspending the rules and voting a second time. Thanks again.
I'm sure Mike would support that.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of suspending the rules and entertaining this ordinance on second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No opposition. We now can entertain this ordinance 2025-0803 on second reading.
So I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-0803 on second and final reading.
There's a motion to approve this ordinance on second read. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks also Diane, once again, for making that point. I should have remembered Back to my point of order. That will take us back to item number one, which is the 2026 Budget Presentations. That will set things in motion once again. We have department heads that are here. I really want to thank Jeremy Skinner. He has been here all day and his willingness to come up once again. He was here a few weeks ago with his budgets. He mentioned publicly that he would help the mayor with the mayor's budgets, really our budgets. And it's always nice to have Jeremy speaking for the City of Warsaw. Jeremy?
Before we start
Yeah.
Can I, hang on for a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
First of all, Jeremy had this petition for voluntary annexation.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah. Oh, a walk-in, okay. So. I was going to go over that real quick.
Okay.
So I did, I did hand out to you a petition for annexation. I just wanted to get that out of the way. It doesn't take any action by you other than to acknowledge that you've been, as petition for annexation has been submitted to you. That starts a clock for me. That means I have to do, I have to do so much by a certain date, otherwise they can walk over to the courthouse and file with the courthouse. I've attached the petition that's been signed by the property owners Chandler and Aaron Williams. And I've attached a map to that petition that shows you the three parcels that they are petitioning the city to annex in. It is along Husky Trail. So I'll be working with them over the next month and a half to complete that annexation process, at which point we'll have a public hearing and ordinance will be presented to you for your approval. But for, for today, you just need to acknowledge that that petition has been submitted.
Yeah, I apologize for not remembering that, but this did come to you today. Is that correct?
Yes.
Like you said. And when this does happen, it's the responsibility of the city, correct me if I'm wrong, the two of you, that you do present that request that's in writing now to the council in a public meeting.
Yep.
You're telling me also, and maybe you can help, no action is needed. You just need to, the first step here, you have presented this to the board for the record.
Yeah, this is their legal right to ask for you to annex them in. And we can choose not to do anything, or we can choose to annex them in. And if we choose not to do anything, that sets a clock ticking for them that they can go over to the courthouse and then petition the courts to force us to annex them in.
Okay. So no action needed. You provided hard copy. And I apologize to the board, I forgot. Probably a better time for him to bring this up now too, otherwise he's going to end up waiting for quite a while. So any questions on this?
I know this is really a question for a later time, but this appears to be adjacent to public services.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, potentially more to come. Thanks to Jeremy and Lynn. Thank you for reminding me of that. All right, now, oh, I'm sorry.
I handed out a few things for the budget book. You have the budget bulletin that we didn't have in time for the, when you got your budget books. So it was under the tab that says IAC bulletin, which really needs to be changed to AAM bulletin. And then Denny also had an explanation sheet for his budget
Yes.
That he gave us all. So David, you should have those both too.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, Lynn, am I okay now? You're doing great.
Well, no, I, and I don't know since if you guys went over the, the budget book at the last meeting since I wasn't here or if Kelly explained anything or not. But if you guys have any questions, just let me know, okay?
Thank you for that.
Sorry for that.
No, uh-uh, this is great. This is good. That's why we're here. All right, so back to the budget presentations. And again, thank you, Jeremy, for coming in tonight. Hope to take us through several more budgets. Where would you like to start tonight?
Well, so we're going to start with the first number, Edit 2209.
2209. Thanks, Jeremy.
So this is economic development income tax. It's a part of the lit tax that the county collects. And of that lit tax, that 1% income tax that the county charges, Edit accounts for .03 or, or three tenths of that 1%. And so for 2025, you can see 2025's budget that was approved last year. A lot of things come out of Edit. Parts, parts of my salary and wages come out of Edit. Part of my offices' salaries and wages come out of there. The sewage bond pledge, so the Edit also has a $333,000. That's part of that sewage bond that comes out of Edit. KEDCO and NERP dues, so all of our economic development dues come out of Edit. Our OrthoWorks membership, the city's participation in OrthoWorks comes out of Edit. US 30, our previous mayor, Joe Tomer, runs the, head of the US 30 organization. Our participation in that US 30 organization comes out of Edit as well. And then the other three kind of categories are project and professional services related. Also for 2025, we had $400,000 in professional services, $400,000 improvements other than buildings, and then $250,000 in capital outlays. Those three could be used for projects. So for 2025, you had about 1.6 million dollar budget. Beginning of this, of next year, so the beginning of 2026, you have a expected balance of around $3 million with expected revenue of around 1.7. Gives us a total funds for 2026 of 4.8 million in that fund. A little bit of increase for the salary and wages based on the, what the Salary Wage Committee presented. Sewage bond pledge of 333,000 stays the same. KEDCO and NERP dues stay the same, so $100,000's being budgeted for them. The OrthoWorks membership stays the same at $40,000. Our US 30 dues stays the same at 45. And then for next year, there'll be in the budget $400,000 professional services, $400,000 for improvement, other, improvements other than buildings, $225,000 in potential capital outlays. And then we've put a placeholder for the street facility pledge of $250,000 for that project. All of those funds at 400, the 2400s and the 225 and the 250 are all in there for any projects that may come up, professional services that may be needed in terms of any kind of economic development project. In the past, we've done projects out of the tech park. It could be economic development projects associated with recreational opportunities parks. This budget is pretty flexible in that regard. It can do transportation projects. So there's not necessarily an earmark in here for any specific project, but this fund gives you that flexibility as we work through the year, whether it be Anchorage Road or potentially the roundabout on 200 or the park or a skate park. All of those, this allows you that flexibility to use these funds for those projects that may come up. Gives us a total budget for next year of around $1,863,750 and a year-end balance of around 2.9 now. Edit, as you know, has been, is going to be severely impacted by Senate Bill One, depending on what changes may occur or not occur over the next two years. By 2028, Edit will no longer exist. And we'll have to figure out how that plays out when that time comes. But for now, we'll continue as you, as business as usual until we see what the end results of that Senate Bill One, what happens with it.
Well said. We'll work through it this year and then we'll see where we are as we head into the next, next budget cycle, which right now it's looking like it's going to be uphill, as you all know. So, well said, Jeremy.
And we'll have a lot of questions at that point in time. Obviously, our sewage bond pledge, that's pledged out for the life of that sewage bond. So what do we do with that? So a lot of questions yet to be answered, but we don't have those, those answers yet, but we'll work on them for the next couple, year and a half, and hopefully we can figure that out.
Thanks, Jeremy. Any questions on this one? Okay, next one, Jeremy?
So Riverboat, 223- So Riverboat, 2235.
2235, Riverboat.
So this fund is based on revenue received through Riverboat. Riverboat receipts and our cut of the pie, so to speak. So when we started 2025, we had a little over half a million. Each year, we, right now, the revenue's been around 85,000 is what we expect. So total funds for 2025 were almost 600,000. We had a $300,000 budget. Once again, Riverboat is pretty flexible in terms of what you can use it for. So you can use it for parks. I think because it's an entertainment type of recreational thing, I think you should use it for some form of entertainment or recreational purpose. But certainly, you have a lot of flexibility in how you use these funds. Heading into 2026, you have a little, a little under 300,000 with 85,000 expected in revenue. Gives you total funds for 2026 of 383,000. Next year's budget, given the, as those funds are potentially spent, next year's budget's a little smaller in that we're proposing 50,000 in professional services and 150,000 improvements other than building. Gives you a total budget of 200,000. That 150,000 can be earmarked for any project that this, that you as a council would see fit. Could be a park project, could be a road project, infrastructure project. A lot of flexibility in those, those Riverboat funds.
I'd just like to add that, yes, we do not have a Riverboat, but this is just from the state.
Yeah.
From casinos in our proximity to Andy, and we receive X amount every year, so.
For now, until we.
For now.
Any questions on this one? Okay, thank you.
2236. The rainy day fund.
36.
The rainy day fund, we don't always have a budget for this, and I talked to Lynn about this earlier prior in the budget process. Last year, there was not a budget. She put some additional funds in the rainy day. Right now, the balance in the rainy day is a little over 2.3 million. In our conversations, we felt it prudent to at least have a budget. Doesn't mean you have to spend it at all. But it gives you a little bit of flexibility. Not, in any given year, you may not know what you face or what comes up. So having a little bit of money in that, in that fund allows you some flexibility to maybe not have to submit to the state for additional funding if something small comes along. So in the future, in working with Lynn and Jeff, I would propose you have a minimal amount of money in that fund as a safeguard. It kind of helps you, as projects you may face have smaller increases than you expected. And it alleviates having to kind of be repetitive and going to the state and ask for money if it's a small kind of thing that you can fix through the rainy day fund. So for 2026, I, I propose putting 10,000 in professional services and 90,000 in improvements other than building. That's $100,000. So if you have, we have any hiccups or any unexpected projects or unexpected costs next year, you'll have this rainy day fund to fall back on and not necessarily have to go to the state and do an additional appropriation for something as, as minimal as an increase to a project or, or someone, something that comes along that's appealing to, to you guys to do something. So it gives you a little bit of flexibility and it doesn't overburden. We're not trying to spend the rainy day money. We know why it's there, but it does give you that, that kind of safety net.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any questions on this?
Next one is Edit Revolving Loan Fund. It's 2502.
2502.
So this comes, this is Edit Funds that are shifted into this revolving loan fund. As, so as you, as a council, you approved the Edit Revolving Loan Fund process about four, five years ago now. That gives you flexibility from an economic development standpoint, if someone comes in to incentivize the development of companies coming into Warsaw, whether they be startup or new companies. We've used it a few times. We used it when we did Met Artist, that deal. And we've used it with Mentor Media. So Mentor Media's loan is ongoing. We used it this year for Ortho Laser. So Ortho Laser's revolving loan fund is ongoing. So those are based on investment and job creation. So they make the investment to create the jobs. As long as they meet those requirements, this revolving loan fund would be available to them for the, for the time period and the dollar amount as specified by you as the council. If they don't, then they potentially have to repay those. If they do, then those, that revolving loan is forgiven as they meet those guidelines. So for 2025, we had 150,000 in potential loan incentives in that fund. We had 50,000 per the Mentor, Mentor Media loan agreement. Going into 2026, we expect to transfer an additional 250,000 out of Edit into this fund to make 300,000 available for 2026 budget. 100,000 would be set aside in economic development loan incentives. 50,000 for Mentor Media's ongoing loan, 25,000 for Ortho Laser, and then 125,000 placeholder for Marketplace that you will see later this year presented to you for your approval. That one has not been approved by you yet, but you'll have your chance to approve it later this year when they bring that development forward. So for 2026, I'm proposing a $300,000 budget.
Any questions for Jeremy on this one? Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you. Next budget is 4402 CCD.
4402.
So this has a specific tax rate attached to it. Lynn, you.
Yes, it's a nickel.
It's like five cents. Yeah, nickel.
A little over that, and we're at the max.
Right, at the max. So we max out that CCD, which brings in around roughly 650,000 a year. So when we started in 2025, we had a little over 700,000. So for 2025, gave us around 1.3 million. 2025's budget was 825,000. Moving into 2026, because we've been spending that budget down a little bit, we have a little bit less money to start 2026 at a little over half a million with expected revenue around 650,000. Gives us the total funds for 20, potential funds for 2026 of around 1.2 million. So for next year's budget, most of it stays the same. As we have, a lot of, a lot of this budget is, is based on wastewater and street apartments projects. So repair and maintenance sidewalks comes out of here. So there's 75,000 set aside for that. Repair and maintenance for stormwater projects, 25,000 set aside for that. Stormwater project engineering, 50,000. Stormwater repair and maintenance, 50,000. Street sidewalk and curb repairs, 125,000 set aside for those improvement projects. And then a capital improvement project budget of 300,000, down a couple hundred thousand from last year. Gives us a total budget of 625,000. So as we have bigger projects, we may spend additional money. And as we spend that additional money, we have to back down to meet, to make sure we have the funds available based on the revenue. So this year's, this year's budget is going to be less than, or next year's budget's gonna be less than this year's because we have done a couple of larger capital projects out of CCD. Going forward, there'll be some smaller projects, and as that fund builds back up and wastewater and street department, as projects come forward, we'll be able to do some larger projects. So this is kind of a capital way of, of moving some money back and forth and saving some money for some larger projects that are in that capital plan that we go through Baker and Tilly, whether it be wastewater projects or, or street department projects. These are one, this is one fund or, to pay for some of those larger projects with cash rather than doing bonds.
Can you explain what CCD stands for?
Cumulative Capital Development Fund?
Correct.
Do you know what it, okay. Any other questions on this one? Thanks for that one, Jeremy.
That's all I got?
That's it?
That's it.
Want to stick around for the rest of it?
Probably not.
Thank you very much for helping my office. I really appreciate it. Pull through these. Thank you. That will take us to the next budget. Police Chief Whitaker. Good evening.
Good evening.
This first tab is 006.
006. And like all of the budgets, we'll get HRs in here brought in tonight. There's explanation sheets. And the chief has a pretty detailed layout of it. I know, it's always detailed, so thank you. Chief, thanks again. And what are we looking at here with this budget for 2026?
So the first budget is the police general budget. And we are proposing an increase with salaries based upon the Wage Committee's recommendation, a 2% overall pay increase for sworn personnel and a $1,600 per employee pay increase for non-s sworn personnel.
So perhaps we just need to interject in here because I haven't seen the salary ordinance yet that we met with both the police chief and the fire chief, and it was to their advantage to do a percentage increase versus a flat dollar amount because of the way that their retirement is calculated. So that's why you'll hear both of them refer to a percentage increase, which you haven't heard yet before.
Thank you. Thanks, Stein, for that. Chief?
And with this budget, the, the major, the only significant increase is going to come from personnel. We're proposing, requesting to increase our sworn personnel to that of 44 officers, currently budgeted for 43. 2025, the total salaries for, this also includes a, an increase in overtime of 9.68%. But overall, from 2025 to 4,196,000. And then through the additional benefits, insurance, you see nearly a 10% decrease to 965,760. Increase in perf is related to the additional officer and then the city's contribution, I'm sorry. The, the increase to pension contributions by the city increased 19.8%. That's going to be impacted by, one, additional officers, two is the, the increase to 23.3% for the city's contribution to the 1977 Police and Fire Pension Fund. No other changes noted. Overall, personal services was an increase of 240,809.30. But the total personal services is 6,174,170. Any questions with personal services? Moving on to supply category. We budgeted, we're able to budget for the fuel based upon the 2026 contractual agreement we just entered into. The overall decrease in supplies for 2026 is 29,900. So supply total is 382,600, 382,600. Any questions for supplies? If not, we'll move to professional services, or I'm sorry, other services and charges. A slight decrease of 3.18% to a total of 496,600. If there are no questions for the professional, or for other services and charges, the last will be capital outlays. And to try to be as descriptive as possible and provide as many notes as possible that would help get an understanding as to the increase. But looking at a $174,900 increase from 2025 to 645,400. And that brings the total budget estimate at 7,698,770. That is a 5.04% increase from 2025.
Any questions about the police general budget proposed? Like all the department heads, I want to thank the chief for his work. This is a huge responsibility and task that we ask the police, serve and protect, to do. It is a massive budget, and rightfully so. A great deal of appreciation. His ability to work through not only the 2% pay increases, but also changes with pension and then some in personal services, to turn in a 2026 budget with those increases, overall increase of 5.04%. I really appreciate you working through all of this for not only the good of the department now, but also as we think about moving forward, the realities of it. And again, you look at that 7.7 million dollar budget, 6.2 of it is in personal services. So he's really turning in a conservative budget that will continue to protect and serve the community. I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any, any questions specifically with the line items? Again, his worksheets are very detailed, very helpful as you look at this.
Looks like you have some money parsed out for the ERT vehicle, which is emergency response, response team vehicle. I've seen the bus that you guys currently have. So what's that, what's the new vehicle gonna be?
It's my understanding it's going to be more of a van.
Okay.
It'll appear more of an extended van.
Yeah.
It'll be pretty much a base model, and then we'll let them decide on how they want to end up fabricating items to make it. So it's, it works for them.
Okay.
But they do have an item or a vehicle in mind, and it's, that was the, the cost of the, so I just went with that dollar amount for 2025.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
The current bus that they're using, did I see that right? I was a senior in high school. That's the age of that bus?
Yes.
1985.
I was gonna say five years old.
That was, that was just a few years ago, by the way.
Say okay, Mr. Basketball.
All right, stop. Yeah. I just saw the 85. I thought, oh, my goodness. So, yeah. Good question, though. Any other questions on this?
And I will, I will be providing you with a vehicle list up to date, which will show that bus and its age.
There you go. Any questions? Thanks, chief, for that. Do you have others you want us to look at?
Yes, we'll do. Law, continue on that?
Whatever's next in the line.
That would be.
Yep, 2228.
2228. 2228. Thanks, chief.
All right, this is a revenue-driven account. And we've budgeted 1,800 in supplies, a slight increase from last year. Law, continue on Ed. Training and travel, 2,000, and then other equipment items at 18,200. Weapons-related, 18,200. Weapons-related, 18,200.
And these funds come from tickets that go through the court system that we receive, $3, $4 from? Is that correct?
Yeah. Give you exactly. So, the law enforcement user fees, the docket fees, we estimate are roughly 3,000 per year. Accident report fees and then the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, I thought had removed it, but we did receive another check yet again this year. Some of approximately 9,000. That's, those are considered grant dollars that are, that replaced the handgun license permit fees that we used to charge. So, that was what our loss was and we've been receiving that each year for the last four or five years.
Any questions? Thanks, Chief. Next one?
It looks like the opioid, the 2256, 2257 after that.
You want to go to the opioid?
2256, opioid settlement unrestricted and then 2257. Chief, could you help me out with this one, these two?
Absolutely. So, this year, well, for starters, the obvious, I think everybody's aware of the opioid funds and the fact that each entity, city government, county government's receiving a portion of that settlement. We started receiving funds, I think, first in 2024 and then
2022.
Was it 2022?
I think so.
Well, we haven't touched the funds up until this year. We actually spent, I think, 30,000 out of 2025's budget.
That was out of the restricted.
No, no, that was out of the unrestricted, the 30,000. Regardless, the, so we made budgets in 2024, we made a budget 2025, and now, obviously, this is a 2026 budget. We are not using the remaining funds in 2025. Those, that, because we're taking those dollars and going to hold them for 2026. And the purpose of this is to be able to solely fund the CARES program and that's
We're on the unrestricted. That's the restricted that the CARES money comes from. Unrestricted is what you got your body cams from.
Right, but we're using both budgets to fund the CARES program.
Guess I'm confused with what you're saying.
Take them through this one unrestricted. No personal services, obviously, chief.
Right, so this, this budget is, these are items specifically for the CARES program and for the, for the three CARES employees that we have, City Warsaw employees that are assigned to the CARES program. So, the first item is going to be supplies of 1,500. We're going to have operating supplies, fuel, quarter mass, uniform, uniform supplies. Communication, transportation, phone, tablet, MiFi cellular, and then there's for the office, printing, photography, advertising, and subscriptions. Total is 8,000 for other services and charges. And then for equipment, we've got other equipment at 7,500 and then in-car tablets at 12,500 apiece, or total, I'm sorry. That'd be for two. So, capital outlays is 20,000 with the total being 41,500. And again, that's, this is going to be for the unrestricted and we have used the unrestricted in the past for police-related items.
So, so just to clarify here, just to make sure we're all, I'm hearing, I'm hearing you correctly. For the unrestricted fund, which you just covered, all of that, that $41,000 is to help equip the CARES employees to get new whatever they need for their cars and everything, right?
Correct.
Is that, okay. Yeah. But it's not towards salaries or anything. It's just simply equipment for their, whatever they, resources they need to do their job every year, right?
Correct. And I, and I basically worked with the fire chief who was able to provide me with a list of what he had and budgeted for this year. So, we're just trying to say something to that.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Are we good?
We'll talk tomorrow.
Restricted opioid funds, we need to move on to that?
Yes, the restricted funds.
It may have been easier if we would have started with
Okay.
The wages, okay, good.
If we would have started maybe with the
This one's 2257, opioid settlement restricted. Thanks, Chief.
All right, so the personal services is going to entail the salary and benefits for three employees for a total of 254,500. And that is, all that that is in that budget. So, it's 254,500 is the total.
So, I just have a quick question. Where does, do their training dollars come from when they need to go to their conferences and that kind of thing?
Well, as of right now, it's the fire department.
Oh, you're right. Okay.
But if I, if, if we go back and if I look at the unrestricted Yeah, there's nothing currently in, in there for, for But it doesn't mean that, obviously, it can't be supplemented from another, another department.
I do want to thank the chief, both chiefs. I want to thank the council. And obviously, it's not over Lynn's assistance for allowing for the use of the opioid dollars to be targeted for CARES, a program that the city or the Warsaw Wayne Fire Territory has been operating through with grant funding and other sources. I know there was a lot of discussion on the council how to use the dollars. Obviously, I don't have a vote on this, but I appreciate you looking this direction to get those dollars, like the chief said, that have not been put back into the community, other than the assistance we had with the courts. There's been equipment and other minor things, but nothing like this. And I do appreciate moving a large amount of those dollars back into the community, which will do everything, obviously, we can, those dollars, to counter the problems associated with opioid use.
Initially, we, you know, when we were looking at the opioid funds as a council, I think a lot of us had a lot of different ideas of how to use it. And it got complicated quick. And so, having looked at CARES and the fact that the grants were going to be no longer available and the fact that the CARES program has been, I would say, pretty, pretty good success, you know? I've not heard anything bad about it. You know, we, we just, we felt that it was, it was prudent, really, to just, to put it someplace that the city has to pay for anyhow if we're going to continue with this program. So.
I felt really comfortable with that because I had several groups reach out to me and the nonprofit thing and how do you decide amongst them, which is more important than the other? And I really felt that the CARES program was
Yeah, we, I think we could see ourselves getting into some of the same predicaments that we did with other nonprofits. And that was, that was another con to the, to that equation.
And this is a little bit more tricky because you can only use certain things, certain funds for certain things.
True, which would further complicate us trying to divvy it out differently.
And then the grant that's rolling off with, the state keeps so much from the opioid settlements and that's our first grant was from that. So, now they're probably just trying to spread it out to other places throughout the state, unfortunately, for us. Good for the other communities.
The chief's willingness to help, I mean, I remember, what was it, like a year, year ago, trying to get these back into the community. I'll never forget that. And again, monies, dollars were being used, but you're like, Mayor, this could, this could be used to really help people and it's evolved into this, like you've said. And again, your assistance with others to make this a very good proposal, I think, for 2026, taking this into next year. Any other comments or questions? Thanks for helping me with that. Any others, Chief?
Police pension, 8802.
What number, I'm sorry?
8802.
Your very last tab.
8802, the very last. You're right. Police pension fund. Thanks, Chief.
So, the personal services of 275,850. Supplies of 450, for professional services, 3,350 for a total budget of 279,650. It's an 8.69% increase. Any questions for the
Any questions for the chief on this one?
And also remember, we have investments in this fund. $500,000, we have investments.
A lot. Very well-funded.
It is very well-funded.
Any questions for the chief on this one? Any others, Chief?
No, I do not have a forfeiture budget. Hopefully, next year.
I do want to publicly thank you for all of your work for this city countless years. And I know you, whether you like it or not, we do more often than not, you know, greatly value your insight and input to protect and serve the community along with dedicated, your dedicated officers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Council.
Take us to the fire chief. Chief Schilling.
Yeah, tell me where to start.
Well, you should know by now, this is your second round of budgets.
Let's go 2238. We'll start at the beginning if that'll work.
Do your hazardous materials first.
Which one, Chief?
2238. Should be the hazardous materials response fund.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this fund comes from, if we go to any hazardous materials calls, Indiana code allows us to bill for our supplies and then for apparatus that is there for a certain timeframe, based on the scheduled fee produced by the State Fire Marshal's Office. So, those funds come into this. With those funds, they're only restricted to a few different items mainly. They have to do with hazardous materials, either on our response or training for us. So, with that, just $900 is what I'm proposing to replace some of our four gas meter sensors. So, that's what the Q-ray sensors are there. And then oil absorbent for when we go clean up oils off the road or fluids on any of the roads there. So, $1,200 for there as well. And then capital outlays, we are going to purchase a mini-ray meter and we don't plan on having any capital purchases there. So, the total proposed amount is $2,100 for minus 67.69% on the hazardous material fund. Pretty self-explanatory on that one.
There's plenty of money in the fund to support that.
Oh, yes, yes, there is plenty of money in there to support that. Thank you. Any other questions on that one? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the operating budget, 2243. And I don't want to stand up here and echo, but what Chief Whitaker and the mayor have already said. But again, thanks to both them and you guys for the use of the opioid dollars to help our budget. And yeah, I'm not worried about the training. We'll work together and get it worked out so they have what we need. They're an essential service to the city. So, I'm just glad that they're able to be funded by that to help our budget. So. Like everybody else pretty much already said, 2% increase for the salaries and wages. We did an 18% increase in the employee benefits. Most of that is due to, like Chief Whitaker said, our state 77 pension fund increased from 20.3% up to 23.3%. And then again, health insurance, all that stuff going up as well. And then other personal services went up 8.8%. So, a total personal services total of $6,459,260. There. Any questions on the personal services? Okay, moving on to supplies. We kept our office supplies the same, a zero. Operating supplies, which is where our fuel and some of our parts for our apparatus come out of, 6.3% increase there to 135,000. Repairs and maintenance, as far as our station repairs and some of our small equipment, we left at 75,000 for a 0% increase there. As you move on to the next page, other supplies, our smoke alarms, we have a good stock of those along with our fire prevention materials. And like everybody else talked with some of the shortfalls of Senate Enrolled Act I, you see a negative percent there of 1.75% for total in supplies of $215,000. Any questions on that one? Moving on to other services and charges, as I worked through my budget, there were some things with Lexipol that we got. Our attorney, financial consultancies, and First Do, which is our reporting program, we moved into this budget. It was in our equipment replacement budget and it fits in this one. So, that's why you see the, kind of the big jump from 20,000 to 58,000 there. Other than that, our new hire physicals, we are at the current staffing that we have for our budgeted amount. So, I don't anticipate that, but I did want a little bit of money in there just in case we have a retirement or anything like that. And then a reduction in our yearly physicals and random drug screens. So, a 27.34% decrease there in professional services. Moving on to the communications and transport, again, another decrease of 42.98%. Most of that was in the training fund there.
Mr. Mayor?
Chief, we're missing a
We're missing We're missing everything he's gone over right now.
I have one copy.
You don't have to look at the explanations. You just look at the budget.
Yes, so the explanation sheet, I do apologize, didn't catch it. You'll have to go to the actual state forms, which would be other, it's other services and charges.
Yes, other services and charges.
It's the second page and he does have descriptions, not as detailed as his worksheet. But if you do go back, you'll see some of the items that he has been talking about. I apologize.
Can you tell us the number at the end, Lynn, like 340, 350, 3, what are we looking for?
I'm sorry, what's that? I didn't hear you.
Well, we're trying to find this. So, we've got 340, 350, 360, 370.
Yeah, I was just in the 320.
So, it'd be under the three, the other services and charges?
Yes, it's still under the other services.
Other services?
We don't have, yeah, okay, we've got that.
Yeah, it's on your Form 1, but not on the explanation sheet.
Yeah, sorry about that. That's, I'll take the blame there. The other services and charges, number three, you can see it and you're in the 320, which is communication and transportation.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so through all that, from last, from where we were last year, it's, that 320 category is down 42.98% with the majority of that being the training. Printing and advertising, we did not do an increase there. We left it at the 4,500 for the total of that. Insurance, we did a 12.11% increase there from 2025. Utilities and services, we went up 4.68% to $60,000. And then repairs and maintenances, we put up, or added $5,000 to that for 7.14% increase. Then moving on to rentals, again, with the Then moving on to rentals, again, with the, a sixty-eight-point-seven-five percent decrease in that, most of that is with the cares office space rent. Again, working with the mayor and the chief of police, I think we have some space that may be available for them, but not a hundred percent sure yet there, so we did remove that as well. The debt services, the two thousand sixteen GO bond is left the same at nine-thousand dollars. And then other services and charges went down nine-point-nine percent, excuse me, nine-point-oh-nine percent, down to fourteen-thousand dollars. So a total in other services and charges reduction of sixteen-point-three-two percent. You guys still don't have the other explanatory sheet?
No, I'm gonna have to check that tomorrow, see if I did get copied.
Okay. And then in the capital outlays, equipment, tools, office and machinery, we left the same at twenty-thousand dollars for a zero percent increase. And then we did have, in twenty-twenty-five, we did have fifteen-thousand dollars in the other capital outlays for specialty equipment, and that has been removed. So a total, capital outlays total of twenty-thousand dollars, which is a reduction of forty-two-point-eight-six percent. Bringing our total operating budget to seven-million-one-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten dollars for a five-point-one-eight percent increase. Any questions over my operating budget?
Sorry you didn't have the explanation sheet, you do have it in the state form, but the problem is it doesn't compare to last year. Personal services, that two percent, and how the chief was able to be creative, the but, the percent increase, which you can see on that first item, personal services was seven-point-five-one percent. Supplies, you can't see it, but in supplies, he has, from last year's budget, he's gone down almost two percent in that budget. And then the one that's missing, and why I want to point this out, you do have access to the, if you did ask for it, the Fire Territory Board meeting, I know some of you've asked for other board meetings, and we've given that to you, it is in there, okay? I'm looking at it right now, and the reason why I want to point it out, again, great effort by the chief, when you look at other services and charges from twenty-five to twenty-six, he is proposing a budget for this year that is over sixteen percent less than what it was last year. And you go to capital outlays, and he's forty-two percent less. And so if you take a look at all of that, remember I've mentioned conservative, we are still serving the territory, he is still doing everything he can to help his firefighters get through the day, but knowing what we do know, after you get through the salaries, wages, and benefits increases, he's coming in here with another police and fire at five percent. I will just tell you, as mayor and as a taxpayer, all of them, but again, these two departments that provide so much for this community, I appreciate the efforts, and not easy, right, Chief?
Oh, absolutely not.
Not easy, okay, good. So, great appreciation for that. And I will make sure you get the copies, because I think it's so important on all the budgets, obviously, but this budget and his efforts from where we were last year, we won't go there, Chief, and then where we are this year, it's, I just really appreciate your efforts. And apologize that explanation sheet's not in there, I'll get that to you. If you do want to look, though, if you have access to the Fire Territory Board meetings, you can see it in there, the August meeting. Anything else, Chief, sorry I jumped in there?
No.
Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you, you got another one?
Yep, forty-four-ten is the Fire Territory Equipment Replacement Fund.
Four-four-one-zero.
Four-four-one-zero, forty-four-ten. Hopefully, you have the explanatory sheets on this one.
Visit the one sheet here.
Yep, yep, one sheet this time. So, in the repairs and maintenance for the facilities, zero percent increase there, leaving it at a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Debt services, again, I made the decision to not lease, purchase SCBAs and purchase them with the Board of Works approval and the Fire Territory Board's approval. I've changed some things around last year, and you'll see as we get down into the capital outlays a little bit later. I chose not to purchase a new dive truck like I had proposed, looking at some of the things with the dive team and just the need of the SCBAs and then the option of leasing or just flat-out purchasing, I made the tough decision not to purchase the new dive truck, we purchased a used one, and then purchased the Scott SCBAs outright. So that will come off of there. We still do have the ladder, ladder truck lease there, that's two-hundred-and-three-thousand dollars. So in the other services and charges total, it's going to be three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand for a reduction of eighteen percent. Moving on to the capital outlays, improvements other than buildings, we have none there. And then it comes, falls down into the machinery and equipment. So as I look through the previous chief's capital improvement plan, and then I guess put my spin on it and tweak some things around, you'll see some things add and fall off. One of the things that we're going to add is another administration vehicle, so as, as those administration vehicles get rolled through and cycled through, the, kind of the lifespan of them, so you know, they will go from an admin driving it, so myself or the Fire Marshal, and then it will go down to the guys as like what we call a pool car. So if they want to go to a training, they need a utility vehicle, they need to run to the store and get something, they can just hop in that vehicle rather than taking the whole fire truck, and they just send one guy, if they still have three, they can still staff the other fire trucks. So that's kind of the rotation, just to keep up, keep up those, and we also get a good trade-in value when we do that as well. So that's why you see the administration vehicle on there, the rescue pumper finally came after a long, a long wait, so that falls off. Some equipment tech replacement and upgrades, we took off ladder thirteen parts, that should be more like parts slash equipment, so what that is, is twenty-thousand dollars when we anticipate the new ladder truck getting here. We like to upgrade some of the equipment that's on it, so it's up with the times, so we're not transferring old equipment over to the new one. It's worn out and just from wear and tear and use, so twenty-thousand dollars there for them to have that. Obviously, like I just spoke about, the dive truck for seven-hundred-thousand fell off, hose replacement fell off, we had none fail our hose testing this year, so that's a good thing. And then specialty equipment, computers and IT for ninety-thousand dollars. So a total reduction in machinery and equipment of eighty-one-point-two-three percent. And then coming down into other capital outlays, our PPE replacement or personal protective equipment, the gear that we use, all that stuff stayed the same, the only addition there is a training center building slash upgrades. So this is just monies to upgrade our training facility that we use, it's out by wastewater. And then I would like to potentially build a building there for storage for all our equipment. Currently, it's in a bunch of Connex boxes or shipping containers, there's six of them out there, just scattered all over the place with stuff, so to clean that up a little bit, I'm proposing that as well. So, total capital outlays total, reduction of fifty-four-point-four-seven percent from twenty-five, but a total equipment replacement total budget of one-million-three-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars for forty-nine-point-thirteen percent reduction on that fund.
How many administrative vehicles do you have currently?
Currently, we have three.
Three, one for each station?
Well, we actually, yeah, we currently have four, two of which are not being used.
Okay.
Yeah, one will get, I'm not sure if you heard, but at the Board of Works, HR Director, Denny, I have appointed an assistant chief. So he is slated to start next week, next Monday, so that's a huge help for me, huge help for the Fire Department. A lot of guys are excited about that, so he will take one of those vehicles as well.
Agreed, yeah.
Any other questions about anything? Okay, the next budget I have is eight-eight zero-one, and that's the fire pension budget. So with that budget, salaries and wages, a five-point-five-four percent increase, and then everything else was at a zero percent increase, so total pension fund budget of two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty dollars for a four-point-nine-four percent increase. And like Lynn spoke about, the police pension budget, this is a well-funded budget, and we do have five-hundred-thousand dollars of that invested as well.
That will never get spent. Unless the laws are changed.
Yeah, there's only certain ways you can use these funds, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Just like Chief Whitaker, a great deal of appreciation for Chief Schilling, a little over a year now, and privileged to work with you as well. All right, Denny.
Yes, sir, now we've got the lightweights out of the way, we can get down to the people who do all the work. Zero-zero-three is my budget.
And you have the explanation sheet that was given to us, we can put that in the book, thank you, thanks, Denny.
Yes, sir, so, start off with salaries and wages, got a total amount there of seventy-nine-thousand-one-seventy-three, that is for my assistant, and then one-third of my wages comes out of the general budget. The other comes out of Fire Territory and wastewater, so. FICA, PERF, unemployment, insurance, those are all the same as everybody else, there was an eight percent increase in insurance that we budgeted for. So with my personal services, it's a hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-eighteen dollars. That is a reduction of fifty-thousand-seven-hundred dollars from last year. The reason for that reduction is we no longer have a custodian in the building, or maintenance worker in the building, we actually have that contracted out, so you see that later on the budget where that contract amount is in here too, but that's what that decreases from. Pretty much everything else stayed the same in supplies, no changes at all in office operator or maintenance supplies, so that's sixteen-thousand-five-hundred for the year. Other services and charges, that's where you're going to see the, the increase of twenty-three-thousand dollars, that's the amount of the contract for the cleaning of City Hall, they come in three days a week and do a great job, so really pleased with that, and they give us a good, a good price for it. So, other services and charges is a overall increase of twenty-three thousand, but everything else stayed the same from last year. And then capital outlays is the same as last year, four-thousand dollars, which brings my total budget to two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-eighteen dollars, a decrease of twenty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-nine dollars or eight-point-eight percent. So I just outdid the police and fire together. Any questions?
Thanks, Denny.
Appreciate all you guys' help.
All your work, yeah. Okay, two budgets that all present, zero-zero-one first, and then highlight the common council budget, unless Lynn has something else she'd like me to do. Going to the mayor's budget, zero-zero-one, there's an explanation sheet at the end of that budget. Personal services, you take a look at twenty-twenty-five on the left, to twenty-twenty-six, due to salary increases as well as medical insurance, it seems like it's always that. You also have, obviously, other benefits and services, the total is going up six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars heading into twenty-twenty-six, that's a two-point-nine percent increase. If you go to supplies up in the office, many of you up there, no change there with supplies. Moving to other services and charges, just a few minor cuts, again, like Denny, it's not a large budget up there, once you get through personal services. But I did ask my staff to cut back on a few things, communication and travel, you can see that, repairs and maintenance, that is a three-thousand decrease from twenty-twenty-five as we head into twenty-twenty-six, and then machinery and equipment, a small cut as well for twenty-twenty-six. The total budget for the mayor's office is a one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six-dollar increase from twenty-twenty-five, not as good as Denny's, but it's only a point-seven-three percent, so. Privileged to serve in that office, any, any questions there? You go to budget number five, this is a large budget, this is the common council budget, council president, Jack Willhite, has taken a close look at this, appreciate his efforts, I have bothered Cindy quite a few times with it also, and I know I've talked to you, to all of you about it, but taking a look at this budget, this would be common council, zero-zero-five, you go to the explanation sheet, salaries and wages with the increases by the, made by the, or recommended by the Wage Committee, as well as other benefits, this is eleven-point-one percent increase from twenty-twenty-five. If you go to supplies, there is a five-hundred-dollar decrease for supplies for City Hall, took some off of office supplies, still keeping the fuel for the City Hall generator, I think I've seen it used once, but we certainly want to budget, not for a very long time, want to budget for that if something were to ever happen. If you go to other services and charges, this is where the action is, and there's a lot going on in this particular section. Personal services, which are the council contracts, going up from eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-three-hundred dollars to nine-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, you can see the detailed explanation sheet just to the right, you'll see where it says council contracts in the explanation sheet. I do need to thank Cindy for her leadership, helping my office and the council, as well as Jack with some insight as well, taking a look at our council contracts for twenty-twenty-six. The overall increase, and it's pretty impressive, is thirteen percent. These particular organizations were asking and working through their budgets, and Cindy, along with my office, able to work through what I think is a pretty sound proposal to support all of the contracts that we had last year heading into this year. So Cindy, great deal of credit there, I appreciate that. You then have all of the other contracts below, just a six-thousand-two-hundred-dollar increase at my end, the big one is with legal and professional services, talking to Lynn, thinking I should increase that by twenty-thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-six, is simply for professional services, i.e. Baker Tilly or other financial groups that might be able to help us not only this year, but heading into the next couple of years, prepping for SB one. If you go back to other services and charges, and you work your way down the line, US thirty- dues, third-class cities of our size have been asked to contribute heading into next year, $10,000, again, that is supporting the efforts, I was actually in my office for over an hour today, working with Dr. Tomer and Jeremy Skinner on our efforts, as well as other cities, prepping for US 30 and its impact. Again, this would be the Pell study, you're going to be hearing more probably in the next month from my office, as well as the county, what are we considering to be the top priority project heading into 2026? There's a lot of administration and efforts that are made by this group along the corridor, lots of leadership, Dr. Tomer, a former mayor, one of them, as well as other mayors, I'm on the board or the group, but I'm not one of the leaders in it, to help not only know what is happening at the federal and state level, but also work through specifically impacts on our area, on the city. And so that dues that's been paid for, I don't know, Lynn, how many years now, but how many? Three, three years, two, three, maybe four. The request was made from the leadership to go to $10,000, as we get closer and closer to working through what we would like to see with US 30.
Mayor?
Yes?
Jeremy had US 30 dues in his budget also, so is that the same fee, and it's just separated between two departments?
I don't want to say that now, I would ask him, but there's just a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, and this, this one that he's actually doing, I don't know, but this one is actually just the dues for it, and.
That's what his was called also, and his was a pretty significant amount, it just, that just seems like a lot, so.
I'll ask him tomorrow and have him.
Yeah, I am curious about that.
I forget what budget is, but I'll look into that, but this would be a request that was made to my office months, you know, obviously, months and months ago, our portion of it, and what their request was, and I, I agreed with them, and that's why I did put it in the budget, but we'll give you more information to help you out with that. Good. The PR budget, keeping the fireworks in there for now, I think maybe next year I might, because I think it is legal, if you remember, the Park Department used to pay for that, but then the State Board of Accounts asked us to put it into this particular fund, I'm keeping it in there for this year, but I may eventually, in the future, transfer, or ask the Park Department to put it in theirs. That means my PR budget is $26,500, so it's the same as last year. Here's a big one, communication and transportation, IT and tech communications, you'll notice those dropping in the amount of dollars, I will tell this board, I've told you several times, that having BitComputers contracted for more work this year has really paid off. I've talked to several of you about it, BitComputers and their leadership, specifically Brady, has helped us out tremendously when it comes to IT and IT security, so that's good news. Insurance, if you look at insurance, per the Clerk Treasurer's Office, budgeting for a 12% increase, that's why those numbers are really high, but again, necessary to cover all of our bases, again, all of that coming out of council budget. Utility services, I thought gas and electric, the way things are going, I think we're okay, but I thought I would budget almost another $2,000 a month for that, to just make sure if anything does change drastically, we're covered. Repairs and maintenance, I brought out the red ink, you'll see in the explanation sheet that a major item that did not exist a year ago is the new HVAC system, which is coming to a City Hall near you in a month or two, and it's going to be massive. It is a 1.6-plus million dollar project, we have in there 846,000 budgeted, which again, didn't exist before, it's getting close to a million dollars, so I wanted to mark it, and I'll bring up why I did in red here in just a minute. You work your way down through the rest of it, and you will see the total for 2026 proposed, it's a $919,125 increase from 2025, that is a 39.5% increase from 2025. However, if you take a look at the HVAC system project that we have approved, if you take the ARPA funds, you also take the lit supplemental, thanks Lynn for your help with that, and our legal settlement, which was pretty large, related to this, that's the major reason for this increase within other services and charges. If you take out the HVAC system project, at 846,000, it is really a 1.6 million dollar plus project, the increase for this particular section, other services and charges, is only 3.1%. Lynn, am I telling them the truth?
You're telling them the truth.
Okay, so I mean, it's just, I know it's, I'm playing a little funny game with the numbers, but that's why, that's, I would like to make the argument, the reality is it's about a 3% increase, if you take that out and all of the moving parts with it. The next page again, you'll see council contracts, I'll take it into Section 4, capital outlays, and keeping it the same, network equipment, we thought about taking it down a little bit, but the IT governance and also BitComputers, making the point that it might be a good idea just to keep it the same, because anything can happen, and usually that's a placeholder, according to them, if I even understand what they're up to. Form 1 totals, the total amount, last year it was a total of 2.4 million, this year we're almost at 3.4 million, but let me repeat again, if you take out the 846,000, you take a look at the ARPA money, you take a look at the lit supplemental, as well as our legal settlement, the overall common council budget, if you remove that, is only a 3.4% increase from 2025, okay? There was no way of getting around it, Jack helped me, Cindy helped me, Lynn, obviously, is always helping me try to put together a conservative budget, which I think we have only if you're willing to look at the HVAC system and how I've presented it to you, and the way I would like you to look at it. Okay. Lynn? Okay?
I just have one question.
Question.
From the nonprofits, what is Safe Harbor?
Safe Harbor is, we don't like to say nonprofit, but you're right, Safe Harbor is a local organization, Cindy, we've never been asked before, I think the request was a little over 15,000, and Cindy, and I looked at that, and there is an amount at 7,800, do you want to talk?
We've actually been asked, I think by law enforcement, a couple of years, because Safe Harbor deals, as I understand it, with children that may come from homes where there's domestic violence, addiction, whatever, and, and I know they're getting more and more calls, we've been asked in the past, and we haven't ever funded, so we thought perhaps this year.
And it's through the core system, correct?
Right.
It is.
Yes, and it deals specifically with, with children.
And then just to comment on the facade grant, so I think in the last couple of years, they have changed their match, it's $10,000, so, just so they're aware they're going to have a half.
Yes, but not every, yeah, not all of the requests have come through, yeah, come through that, so. And I think they're working on some other sources, maybe?
Main Street and the facade grant that's connected to that, the committee recommendation is 110,000 total, each one of them at 55,000. The request by Main Street, again, to support the facade grant, was 125,000. Last year, the City Council approved 100,000, 50,000 in Main Street, and 50,000 for the facade grant, both of those going up, you can see on the worksheet, 5,000 each. Again, a lot of credit goes to Cindy, not only this year, but in previous years, just making contact with these organizations before, during, and after they make their requests, and then trying to come up with something that can support them and help them get through the next year as they serve, provide services that we are not providing.
It was very, very difficult this year, because I, I think if I'm correct, Mayor, weren't the requests like 58% or so, over and above what they had been in 2025? And in our fairness, we just felt that we could not commit ourselves, because we don't know what SB1 down the road is going to mean for us, and we didn't want to commit ourselves to more than we felt that we might have to take back at some point, so.
The percent is not in there, but you can see the 2025 received at 322,500. The request that Cindy originally looked at, along with myself, for 2026 from all of these groups, was 562,823. Again, due to a lot of communication, working with these organizations, past, present, and looking at the future realities, the total increase ended up being, instead of well over $200,000, 42,775, for a total increase of 13.2%. And again, a lot of credit for Cindy to manage these and work through it, and, not final, but that's, that's the recommendation. Any questions on any of the common council's budget?
I'd like to make just a couple of comments about the HVAC system. This is something that I think you all are aware of, that we have been looking down the barrel of this, this gun for the last two or three years, knowing that the HVAC system that is currently here has had to have a number of expensive repairs each and every year. The system is, I hate to say it, it's aging, it shouldn't, it doesn't seem like it's been that long ago since we put it up there, but it's, it's to a point where what I have been told is that the, the parts are going to be getting harder and harder to find, too, and so this is something that, that needs to be done, and also, the fact that it's, it is a one-time expenditure, this is something that should not carry on, we should see almost as much decrease in next year's budget as we see increase this year, it's a one-time, one-time expenditure, so.
I think also, just a thank you to our city engineer who had his eyes on this, plus our consulting firm, so we had a check and balance this time of really looking at this, and we're fortunate to have a city engineer who has some expertise in this area and could look critically and question several things before we got to this point.
He really did a great job, and then I think I have mentioned the time Lynn and I were out in the parking lot, and Lynn looked at me and said, Jeff, this is going to have to be done, well, of course, I don't, how are we going to do this? And her ability to help me navigate through ARPA funds, lit supplemental, and then also the settlement, which is a large number, that tells you where we were, and I greatly appreciate Lynn's help also, remember that, out there in the parking lot?
I just want a warm office in the wintertime.
That's what I did, right there, that she said, yeah, let's work through it, and that's why it's being presented this way, so, and appreciate your comments, Jack, as well, so.
So you don't want any more or any less than anybody else would expect?
I just want a warm office mostly in the wintertime, that's my main purpose. I, I'm, my office is the last one to get any heat or to get any cooling, so sometimes it takes all day.
I'll make sure and look into the US 30, give you a more specific explanation, and again, I apologize not catching that, Jeremy working his end, and as you know, though, there's oftentimes several places where we're trying to make ends meet, but I certainly.
It was in the edit budget.
Yeah, I apologize, I should have. No, I don't, and so I'll figure out, and we'll, we'll get you that information. Good. All right, any, any other questions on, on the council budget? Okay, Lynn?
Okay, first tab is number four. That's my budget. So, under wages and salaries, I did the increases that were suggested by the Wage Committee, which then in turn makes the FICA and the PERF and stuff go up, and the health envision, I did the 8% increase, cell phones stayed the same, so I just had a little over half a percent increase for that area. Under supplies, everything stayed the same, so I had no increase, stayed the same from last year. Pretty much the same thing under other services and charges, I looked at some things, and there was a slight decrease in some areas, like for my traveling, we can do a lot of things online now, like the DLGF offers webinars, as well as AIM from time to time, and I have to have so many points per year, and that sort of helps save, save with that, so there's a decrease in that area of almost 13%. So my overall budget went from $203,185 this year to $199,850 for next year, for a 1.6% decrease. Applause, please.
A big applause for all of our departments.
So, the rest of, well, the next tab I have is the General Obligation Bond, which is tab 3307, and there's nothing we can really do with that, it is what it is, according to the debt service schedule, which I have that on the very last page. And next year, it looks like our payments are going to total $258,000, and Wayne Township does help us with a very small portion, about a quarter of that payment every year. Unknown how they'll, if it will go on with Senate Bill 30, or Senate Bill 1, I don't know how it's affecting them, but hopefully everything will be okay. Any questions there? The next tab is 3311, and that's the new street department bond, and on the very last page, again, is the amortization schedule, and since this is a redevelopment authority bond, it's a lease rental bond, so we go by annual lease payments, and you will see that our first lease payments are going to be due, our first one's going to be due August of '26, and the second one of February of '27, but we'll have to include that in our budget for this year, so we'll have that money for the second payment, and the first payment will be $1.2 million. It differs a little bit from the debt service schedule because of the extra fees charged in for Huntington Bank being the trustee and paying agent for that bond, since it's a lease rental. Also, Huntington is going out of the business of being paying agents or trustees, and they're going to, with a new company called Argent, and we haven't had any communication yet from Argent, so hopefully the fees will stay the same, but we'll see as we go on. So this is going to be, this bond, our rate up for that for next year is going to be a big add to the budget, the overall tax rate and everything, just an FYI. The next tab should be. The next tab should be the Park Department Bond, and it's 3312. Again, we have to go by the amortization schedule. So the total bond and, or the principal and interest payments for that for next year will be 340,125, plus the 750 paying agent fee, annual paying agent fee. So that is what it is. And then finally, my last budget, I know you guys don't want the last budget to be done, you want to keep going on with this stuff, as a joke, is 4401, and it's the Cuban Capital Improvement Fund. And just in case you're wondering what we can use this money for, there's a long list, but at the end of the long list, it says, or anything the government entity wants to use the money for, so I don't know why they have a long list. But we have been using it for trails for the last, ever since I can remember, and we got $65,000 budget for the bike walk path, any improvements on that, and $5,000 for professional services, which I think Justin has used for engineering services or consultant services. Usually every year, we don't even spend half of the budget, but we just have it there in case we want to spend it for something, but going forward, and with Senate Bill 1, we might want to consider using this for so many other purposes as well. And this all comes from cigarette tax money. So that's it. Everybody away?
I want to thank you guys for sitting through these, and then efforts to help us get to this point. It's not over yet, but moving forward with the 2026 budget. That'll take us to other matters on the agenda, and I'll just remind everybody that the Dear Task Force training will be this Thursday at the Orson Police Department, Year 20. Todd Braddock here, explaining again what has been done and what we are doing to make this a safe and effective program. Looking forward to being there as we go through our 20th year of training and get ready for the next or upcoming season. Anything else from the board, any other matters? Okay, I do want to thank everybody for sitting through all of this. Any comments or questions from the public? Would you, yeah, come on up, yeah, come on up, yeah. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So I just want to introduce myself, I was here a little bit earlier. What I'm working on is something that I think deserves to be on the agenda. It will be a 12-year GovTech mandate, right?
What was your name, please?
Hi, Simona, I don't, is this...
Yeah, you speak a little closer, yeah. Simona, what's your last name?
Lynn, actually, we have the same name, so I was like, wow, look at that. My name is Simona Lynn, and I'm not from here, I'm from Michigan, actually, guys, so I've been here for almost three years, working as an executive, and yeah, I'm doing an implementation firm, and it requires a GovTech mandate to be passed, and I am proposing a community standard contract for 12 years. I am submitting it officially to every correct department, and yeah, I just think that this needs to be on the itinerary or just a part of you guys' discussions. It involves everything as far as implementation with technology, but also the education portion that is missing. There's a huge gap between the future of work and where we are today and how we move forward with that. So I am petitioning now, I've been running a campaign for almost 15 years, and I'm not by myself, even though I'm here today, my sweetie is outside, I have a team of people with me, including some ISP providers, including stakeholders, my old RSO from Michigan, and then I'm also doing a bridge between the other universities that are here in Indianapolis, or Indiana as the state in, in general.
What kind of techs did you call it?
Which part, med tech or ed tech?
Both.
They're all acronyms, right? So what I'm speaking on is in regards to a community contract standard, so it's going to be something that I propose that is a GovTech mandate for 12 years, and it includes some of the subjects that we talked about with consultation services, and implementing the workforce to get them really ready for what's ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you sitting through all that, too, that was a long wait, sorry.
I have a lot of notes.
Long night to come to the council. All right, good, thank you. Anybody else have anything? Chris, good to see you. Thank you. All right, anything from the board? Nothing? All right, I will, it's, is that clock right? So it's not even eight o'clock yet?
That's pretty good.
Yeah, I know, actually, yeah. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we are adjourned, thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, Josh, how do I get everything turned back?
Hit the volume up button.
Okay, I got that.
And if you click on here, then you can, there's, see it up now, there you go. That's ring...